Call the meeting to order, please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without any紛擾, liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Markey?
Here.
Mrs. Markey?
Here.
Paul Pallett?
Here.
CNN Peget?
Here.
Here.
Good evening, everybody. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to public comment, agenda items only. Seeing that nobody is here, I move to close that portion and move on. We're gonna go, before we do some board presentations, we're gonna go into committee reports. And for our student representative, good evening, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so I just wanna talk briefly about a few things we did, the All School Council did during the month of October. And so, the first thing was, as a club, we decided on a T-shirt design for all the members to wear to future events, which was a big fundraiser for us, we all participated in it. And we did this to give us more money to fund the future activities, and also to give us something to kinda bring us together for the future events. And also, one really big thing that we did this month was, our members attended both the North End and South End Elementary School Tricker Trunks this past Saturday. And so, we had members at both the North End and South End School to help, we each did a car, we decorated a trunk for each one, we had our members walking around, volunteering, helping with the kids, handing out candy. This was the first time we've ever done this, and it was definitely, will be happening next year, it was a big hit for that. And we're currently holding a Halloween Spirit Week this week, which we have Black and Gold Day, Class Color Day, Wear Your Halloween Costume Day. And one thing we found that was very engaging, and kind of a way to get everyone to participate, is we've had 50 donuts in the morning, and if you come in dressed in the spirit wear, you get a donut, and this was definitely very engaging for everyone, and it was a big hit, they were very excited about it.
It weighed everybody's heart, right?
Yeah, right.
Through their belly.
So that was just a few things we did during October, that brought the All School Council together that we accomplished. That's just what I wanted to say.
The Tricker Trunks looked amazing.
Yeah, that was definitely very fun.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
I'm sure the little kids appreciated that. Okay, great. As always, you're welcome to stay, or you're free to go.
I'm with them, so.
Okay, so, we are gonna go right into our presentations. We have two presentations tonight. I can see this little tiny agenda. The first is the high school music overnight, trip to Vermont and New York. Or charity. Okay, thank you. Oh, so, press this? It's on? I don't know if I press it? Okay. Yeah. Okay, so, we're planning an exchange concert again with Mount Anthony Union High School, Bennington, Vermont, where my best friend teaches. We would like to rehearse with a common theme, which is "Any Dream Will Do," and perform an evening concert with new friends. We are planning for Friday, May 16th here, an all-day rehearsal, and then the next day going to Broadway Workshop and the performance of The Great Gatsby. And the performance of Joseph and Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat that Friday night. And then, Sunday, May 18th, getting on a bus early in the morning to go to Vermont, and rehearse all day with them, and then perform. And the following day, go on the steamboat lunch cruise in Lake George, the Loch D'Ust-Saint-Sacremont. We have done that before with another group of students a few years ago, and it's a big hit. And this is gonna go fast, this is all the package, things that are included, maybe I can pause. So, the package, if the students choose, you'll see the options later, if they choose to do the whole four days, we're only gonna need one night in Vermont for the hotel accommodations. And then, the motor coach, the lunch cruise, the Broadway ticket, the Broadway workshop, breakfast daily, lunch and cruise. We do a lot of pictures, and then we send them to this group travel company, and they make us a post-trip video. We get a tour manager with us, and we'll also have our chaperones, depending on how many students. It's myself and Mr. Savino, and we have other teachers that are willing to go if we have enough students. All the gratuities, and the registration and payments, it's great, it's all done on wetravel.com, so we don't have to have anybody collecting money. And also, the group travel insurance. That one has a little bit of a longer slide transition. The other ones are going too fast. We'll see in a few seconds the other options, because some students like to just do the New York part, or just Vermont. These are the group T-shirts we wear for the costume, for the performances. Our tour consultant is George Nimmo, he's a musician. The student groups that are eligible to go, orchestra, band, choir students, theater students, and crew students, 'cause it's a musical in concert, Joseph and Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. And here are the options, they can do all four days, they could do just going to Vermont, they could do just the concert in Cedar Grove. And this is for the four days, and the participants. And, so, and I can go back, we also have the packet in front of you with the prices and the full itinerary. No times yet, because we have to get board approval first, before we make our first deposit, of course. And I was gonna have a few of my students perform tonight, but one of them is not feeling so well with his throat, so, this is just a little excerpt of a song from The Great Gatsby, the show that we're gonna hopefully go see, and they're also doing it for a competition coming up, January 11th. It's "My Green Light" from The Great Gatsby, this is Eddie DeDarian and Kiel Moogizie, and I'll just listen to a little bit of that pretty lanky song. So, I just played that because it's most likely students that are going to major in musical theater and be a part of this concert of Joseph and Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. And any questions? Okay. All right. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, my senior captain, we're presenting our high school national proposal for this upcoming.
Okay, so, just a brief overview to start with, so, our goal for tonight is seeking the approval to attend UCA High School Nationals in Orlando, Florida for the second year, we went last year as our first year. And the date for this trip would be Thursday, February 6th, to Tuesday, February 11th, with a total of 17 athletes, along with two board-approved coaches. So, if you're asking, why UCA High School Nationals, why do we attend this Nationals? There's just a video of the plan here. So, that's pretty much what it's like. It's a great way to show off all of our hard work that we put in throughout the season and get to compete at this big cheer competition. Okay, so, for the itinerary, for the first day, Thursday, we would meet at the Newark Airport and fly from Newark to Orlando. And then, from the Orlando Airport, we would go right to Disney's All-Star Resort in Walt Disney World, we would check in at the hotel and do all the competition registration, then we would have a team lunch together, then for some study hours, we would get a chance to catch up on all of our homework that we were missing. Then for the team dinner at night, and after that is room check and lights out. For Friday, the next day, we would have a team breakfast, and right after that, we would get into practice. Then lunch and team bonding at the Disney World parks, we would have a dinner at Disney Springs after that, and room check and lights out. So, for Saturday, the first day of competing, we would have a team breakfast, and right from breakfast, we would take the shuttle to ESPN Worldwide of Sports and compete in the preliminary competition. After we receive our scores, we would go back to the hotel for dinner and have room check and lights out. Then for Sunday, the next day, we would again have a team breakfast and take the shuttle to the arena, we would compete in semifinals and receive our scores, again go back for dinner. There's a team celebration that night for all the schools attending High School Nationals at Disney Hollywood Studios, and after that, we would go back to the hotel. And then for Monday, again, we would have team breakfast, take a shuttle to the arena, and compete in the final round of the competition. We would receive our scores and rankings, and then we would again have team bonding at the Disney Parks with a team dinner following. And then the next day, Tuesday, is our travel day home, we would have breakfast, check out of our hotel, travel to the Orlando Airport, and fly from Orlando back to Newark, where we would travel home to Cedar Grove. So, as for the cost and fundraising of this trip, the total cost of the trip comes out to around $1,500 per athlete, and this would be narrowed down with fundraising efforts, we've already done a lot of fundraising to help lower the cost, and we also have a lot of fundraisers planned to help again lower the cost of the trip for each athlete. So, just an overall summary, the goal is to seek approval to attend UCA High School Nationals in Orlando, Florida. This would be our second year attending this competition. The dates are Thursday, February 6th, to Tuesday, February 11th, and everyone coming would be 17 of our athletes and two board-approved coaches. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. I could just also, just wanna say thank you before everyone starts to leave, we just wanna appreciate all of our staff for such great presentations, and all the students who came out, two very exciting experiences, and it wouldn't be possible without the support of our staff, so we really appreciate all you're doing for our students, so, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Of course, of course.
Okay. Now that the fun stuff is over, we'll move on. Are you going through that? The action plan?
Yes.
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Right. All right, I just have a few things that I would like to, on my report, so I'd like to say good evening to everyone, just a few updates before we get into superintendent's report and our business tonight. The school board, several of us attended school boards this past week, and it really was a great opportunity for us, those of us who attended, to meet with our colleagues and explore different vendors, and bring back some ideas and things to add to our district. So, thank you to those who took time off of their work schedules to attend, I felt that was really beneficial. It's a couple things that I want to address before we move on to our business tonight. On October 4th, the Board of Ed held a retreat at the high school, and the agenda focused primarily on discussions regarding an upcoming referendum and the plan to reopen LRP. The board's been discussing and planning this process for a while, it's definitely been going on for a while, and we believe that now we finally have the right people in the right positions to move forward, and we're excited to say that we are at that position to move forward. The retreat involved a lot of contract discussions and legal briefings that required both confidential and open meeting discussions. We are excited to announce that we are very close to sharing with the community a plan that we think will adequately address our district needs while taking into account the need for fiscal responsibility. We look forward to continuing working together to improve our district, and I just wanna thank the board members who took time off of their own personal work schedules to attend this meeting, so thank you very much, it was very productive. The second thing I want to bring to attention is, tonight you're gonna hear a resolution regarding a settlement agreement. We believe it's important to put some context around this resolution. Normally, the board does not speak about litigation matters, but given the situation, we thought it was necessary to just kinda communicate some aspects of it. This board inherited this litigation 12 years ago, it's a 12-year-old litigation that we inherited, and this particular litigation should have and could have been resolved many years earlier, at no cost to the district. The decision to settle now was, in our opinion, the best path forward, as we had to weigh the cost of the settlement with continued legal fees and the potential cost of an outcome if this was to go to trial and ultimately we potentially could have lost, which was more likely the result that was going to happen. We considered the advice of council and throughout the whole process, and explored all possible strategies. We have mitigated as much of the loss as possible, and as a result, the district's insurance coverage, and in addition to the district's insurance coverage, we have reduced our total out-of-pocket expense. We anticipate that this settlement will not be taking away from any money that is budgeted to programming or other key aspects that are necessary to operate our school district this year.
May I add one thing?
Yes, please do.
When the president says this could have been settled a long time ago, at no cost to the district, that's because, give or take 10 years ago, the insurance company, the board's insurance company, had a proposed settlement which the then-board rejected, even though it was close to nothing, the board rejected it. The language of the insurance policy was such that that rejection triggered a provision in the policy which made the board responsible for half of the ongoing legal fees for the last 10 years, not for general counsel legal fees, neither mine nor my predecessor, but rather, having to pay half the insurance company's lawyers legal fees and half of the settlement. All of that could have been avoided, unfortunately it wasn't.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, so, at this point, we're gonna move into, move in some resolutions. Can I have a motion for G1 through G17? Oh, superintendent update. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, he's standing over there waiting every...
So close, I know, the Yankee game's on tonight, sorry.
Madam President?
Yes, yes, please do, I apologize.
Angel, why did this? Is that okay? I'll turn this on.
Perfect. Can you tell if the sound's coming through, Angel? Yes? Perfect, okay. Thank you, and good evening Cedar Grove School District, I apologize to have my back to the board, I wanna address the community, okay, thank you very much. Before I begin my presentation this evening, I did wanna offer my sincere gratitude and appreciation to all the teachers who took time out of their busy schedules these past couple of weeks to meet with me. Over the last two, three weeks, I spent a full day in each of our schools, today was my last day here in the middle school, and it was just a very inspiring experience to get to hear and learn so much about your personal and professional stories, so, thank you all for taking the time to visit with me, and I look forward to working with all of you through this school year and beyond. At last month's board meeting, I presented district goals which were adopted, and at that point, I made a commitment to the community to come forward at this board meeting with a draft action plan. I do wanna stress the term "draft," this is meant to allow us another month to still gather feedback from various stakeholders in the community. As of tomorrow morning, this draft action plan will be on our website, and I'll look forward to hearing feedback from people throughout the month of November, with the goal of having this action plan, strategic plan, adopted at our November board meeting. Let me run through the presentation here, and again, this will be on our website tomorrow. District goal number one has the theme of student growth and achievement, and there were several things we talked about in here related to intervention systems, new math curricula, all those things are underway as we speak and are being fully implemented in classrooms, kindergarten, through algebra across our district. We also have invested and will continue to invest in a job-embedded professional development. I got a lot of great feedback from our teachers these past couple of weeks about that professional development, and I think it's off to a very, very strong start. A couple things to highlight in the action plan that weren't part of the goals, but explicitly calling out on the metric side, the intent of these new curricular resources is improved student outcomes. Student achievement, improved NJSLA scores specific to math, is an area where we think there's a great opportunity for our district, and we think these are some of the key drivers to getting us there. Scrolling down to page two, we highlight, and I heard a lot of feedback about this, especially in our elementary schools, the need for new ELA resources, and we're going, we're looking to launch a committee in the next month to investigate what we may be able to do come next September, so I did hear that feedback, and I think that feedback aligns to that driver here about getting new resources. We got a lot of questions about AI, I know it's on a lot of people's minds, so we are committed to developing some policies to support our teachers with how we use AI effectively and appropriately in our classrooms, and when. And then lastly, making a very public commitment to a new pathway at our high school, a science and healthcare pathway, that you're gonna hear more about from our high school administration in the next month to six weeks, so, previewing that with the community this evening. Goal two, again, the theme is communication, public relations, the driver I wanna highlight here is at the very top, we are committed to launching a new website before the end of this school year. While our current website is beautiful and has a great look to it, there's some functionality that we think we can improve on by building it from a mobile app, which we think will provide our parents and families with a lot more information, that's a lot more accessible in an easier format. We also have ideas of launching a Cedar Grove Alumni Engagement Strategy and a Spotlight Strategy. And I do wanna highlight, 'cause we also have started to hear feedback from some of our families about the new math curricular resources being challenging, which was our intent. We wanna support you with that, and we plan to host some community forums throughout the winter into the spring to talk more about the math program and why certain things are in the place and why they're designed a certain way, so that you can better support your child in your home. And then lastly, goal three, the focus here, theme, facilities, finance, and security, the big one I wanna highlight here is driver number two, and Madam President alluded to it in her remarks, the idea that we are making progress towards preparing for a referendum. Essentially, what we're trying to solve for with the referendum is the congestion at our end schools by reopening LRP. And I'll be talking to the community much more about that over the next several months to a year, as we prepare for the details, and being very transparent with the community about what the details of the referendum are. When we get our approvals from the state, we will also come back to the community and be very transparent about tax impact, why the referendum is being structured the way it is, and what are all of the potential advantages to the community, so, please be on the lookout for that, you'll be hearing a lot more from me in the coming months about the referendum initiative. And I think those are the main pieces I wanted to highlight this evening in the presentation. Again, this is a draft form for the month of November, I welcome feedback from anyone in the community, feel free to send an email, make a phone call, I'm happy to also schedule a meeting. So, with that, I'm gonna end my report for this evening and turn it back to you, all right?
Thank you. It disappears in the abyss. Nothing, you're good. And again, I apologize for...
No, that's fine. You can do that more.
Okay, so now, moving on to the Business Administration's Report, can I please have a motion for G1 through G17?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Under the superintendent's report, general administration, can I have a motion for H1 through H7?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one item for me. Typically, at this point in the agenda, I just would add, if we have any open HIB investigations, then we have, currently have one open HIB investigation. Okay.
Roll call, please.
David Grande?
Yes.
Marzillo?
Yes.
Paul Pallett?
Yes.
Stan Degen?
Yes, abstained from H3F.
H3F. One door.
Yes. Under human resources, a motion for I1 to I12, please. So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion there? Roll call, please.
David Grande?
Yes.
Marzillo?
Yes.
Paul Pallett? Yes, present, but not voting on baseball assistant coach. Paul Pallett.
Which is O12. I12. Couldn't find the letter. Okay, keep.
Stan Degen?
Yes.
One door.
Yes. Under special services, a motion for J1 and J2, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
David Grande?
Yes.
Marzillo?
Yes.
Paul Pallett?
Yes.
Stan Degen?
Yes. Yes. This time, I open the meeting to public comment on any school-related, any, any school-related. Yep, so moved. Say your name, your address.
Janine Patel, 87 Stevens Avenue. I noticed that you were approving coaches for the spring. So I was wondering if there can be an assistant coach for the golf team? Because the first year, we had one. Or I don't know whether they were paid or not. But when we have the golf, when they have the golf innings, only six kids are allowed to go compete each time we have a tournament. And the rest of the kids don't get to compete if they're not good enough. They take the top six every single time. So at least if we had an assistant coach that could stay back and continue to teach our players, then they would get better during the season. And we'd have, you know what I'm saying? We'd have better players for the next season because they're kind of on their own, the beginners. They go to the range themselves, they just kind of are just on their own. It's not like there's like a practice every day after school or something where they could be practicing. So I was just wondering if that's something that could be added.
I appreciate the comment. Thank you.
May I respond?
Sure.
So thank you very much for coming out tonight and posing that question. I will enthusiastically explore that. Might be something I want to put in for, but I'm not sure the players would get better if I'm the coach, so I would be happy to explore. Sure?
He had his favorite player, the top six over the months ago, and there are some kids that maybe want to go on. He tries to get them to at least play one tournament, but it's a three-month season, so...
It's a short season.
They'll decide to join in the end.
Valid point, thank you.
I'll investigate it, sure.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I'll close that portion of this meeting and announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting will be on November 26th. It will be at the high school auditorium, 7:30 regular meeting time. And then the following meeting would be December 17th at North End Media Center. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.